So, item thirteen.
Yes.
The recommendations from the H and H report, items six and seven, because I own a duplex and could be considered a mom and pop landlord.
All right, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of an abundance of caution, the city attorney has asked me to recuse myself from item thirteen because I am a landlord. Additionally, I'm accusing myself from items four and fourteen because my wife's employer has worked with those organizations in the past.
All right, four, fourteen, and thirteen?
Correct.
All right.
Well, I would ask that we do not move forward this continuance because I have a motion, an amendment forward on this, that I know people, my colleagues, you all have concerns, right? And we can talk about process, you know? It came to the floor, we tried rule twenty-three, folks objected to that, it went back to committee, it had a committee process, it came out of committee, we got an H and H report in front of us. This whole time, throughout this entire timeline, I've been trying to work with y'all, personally asking my colleagues to tell me what you need, what changes do you want to see? Tell me, give me direction. Because we don't want to see more corporate landlords take over small mom and pops, but we also don't want to see the reverberations of the crises lead to an eviction to homelessness pipeline that we already exist and funnel more people through that. We started off, I know people were like very triggered by the language around eviction moratorium. People were very triggered about rent increases. All of that has been removed from the motion. This is essentially a brand-new motion. And what I have the motion here ahead of us for the, that's why I don't want the continuance, I want to vote on it today, is that we ask the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance with an urgency clause in furtherance of public interest to avoid forfeiture, limit displacement and homelessness that prohibits the following evictions to extend, to the extent allowed by state and federal laws. Please listen here. If a declaration with documentation of loss of income due to the 2025 fires is provided from February first to January, 2025 to January thirty-first, 2026, where tenants owe less than four months, fair market rent, this protection returns to the standard one month on February 2026. So, I ask the continuance, I ask, I am objecting to the continuance because I'd like to vote on it today because I feel this amendment calls to the concerns that people are talking about around the timeline. We're not talking about a year anymore, we're talking about four months FMR. People were also concerned around, well, how do you document? How are we going to make sure that tenants aren't abusing this process? Well, during, in this amendment, we put in language saying that in the process, you have to submit proof that you've lost income to your landlord. If you do not provide that proof, then you can't benefit from this. This is not that testation process that we have talked about. I know people had concerns around that. So, colleagues, please, let's vote on this today. Let's just get it done today. We've worked together, we've compromised. We're at this place with the amendment of four months FMR, and people have to provide proof of financial loss. Please, colleagues, let's not continue this and just get it done today, please. Thank you.
All right, any other members on this item? All right, let's, Councilmember Padilla.
You know, I also, well, I have mixed feelings about the continuation. I think a lot of us are ready to vote on it today. I think a lot of us know that we were involved in conversations of a compromise. I have seen the language. It is not what we saw a few weeks ago. So, I agree, it has gone through the process. I know my concern, as I'm sure a lot of you also had the same concern, was how are people going to prove that they truly are victim, victims to, you know, the fires? And I think that we've changed the language to include that. I think we've reached out to organizations that are helping us and figuring out what sort of, you know, indexes and proof of loss of income they've shown. So, this is one of the situations where I really do feel like we reached a compromise. So, for whatever reason, continuing it, I don't think is productive. I'm a little, I don't understand why we don't have it distributed out so that we can always just read it. My understanding is that, I mean, what was the excuse again why we are not getting a paper version of it? Because it's going to get read out loud? I haven't heard it read out loud, I heard you read it out loud. So, can we please have it read out loud so that everyone can actually read and understand that this truly has been compromised? And we have incorporated language related to actually proving that you've been a victim of the fire? I've even heard discussions about, well, why don't we let a month go by and then really see if we can gauge how many people are going to be affected when it comes to their rent due to the fires? But do we really need to wait that month? Especially after we compromised? So, that's my ask. Can we please have it distributed? Can everybody please look at it and notice that it has changed drastically? If it would have been the original one, I would have, I for sure would not have been a yes vote. But I'm comfortable with what we have here today.
Thank you for that, members. And again, I would just close by indicating my discomfort voting on this today. There are substantive changes being proposed now, which is effectively thirty or forty minutes that before we do a vote. I don't think that's a proper way to pursue big legislation like this, particularly given the audiences that it impacts and the impact that they have had over the past five years, given everything that has been done with regard to tenants' evictions and to landlords, particularly small landlords. That's why I've requested a continuance. If folks are comfortable voting today, please, by all means, vote down my continuance and we'll, we'll vote on it today. But, but I think it's wiser to take the time to study what's been put before us today. And I know for a fact there are other ideas that folks would like to put forward. Councilmember Ouadato.
Thank you, Council President. Can I have a quick, can we take a quick recess?
No.
I'm going to ask that the members of the public, please, I know every, a lot of people are interested in this item, but we need to be able to hear what the council members are saying. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember.
Yes, can we please take a recess?
For how long and for what reason?
Fifteen minutes.
Can you say, can you say more, please, councilmember?
So that we all can actually get the language for the amendment. I don't have it before me, and maybe I'm slower and cannot just jumble things in my head. But I do need something written before me before I make this decision. So, I would appreciate that. I've seen different things floating around, but I haven't seen the actual new amendment printed and shared, so.
Okay, councilmember, maybe this is a compromise that we can do. We have three more presentations that we've got to do this morning. So, hopefully, in that time, you, you can get the, what you need in front of you so that we continue. But I want to continue with the meeting respectfully. I'd like to continue with our proceedings before we do that. And I'll hold the vote on continuance until after our, after our presentations, all right?
Thank you, Council President.
Any other speakers on the queue? All right, Councilmember Blumenfield.
And also, Mr. Chair, was the council going to take up the item on the matter, the objection to the continuance of item thirteen?
I withdraw the request to continue without objection, all right?
Number one. I'm still waiting for a girl. I'm still waiting for a drowning. A love story is being told. No one knows when flowers bloom. A love story is being told. It's a little bit of a love story. I'm still waiting for you. I don't know if I should say it. A person is sitting there. Two people have different choices. A good love is a good love. Item number two. A cold rain is hitting my face. A warm heart is mingling with tears. The colors of my eyes are fading away. Your shadow is cruel and徘徊 by my side. You're like a knife that's gripping me. My heart is like a knife that's gripping me. The love on the edge, who will accept it? You're the most painful accident of my life. A cold rain is hitting my face. A warm heart is mingling with tears. Your love is so rich and so deep. Your shadow is gripping me. Item number three. I'm still waiting for you. Love is being told. Love is being told. I can't say it. It's a little bit of a love story.
Speaker, I've actually just been informed that this is not on topic for item number three, so I'm going to ask that you stay on topic.
Informed by who? You have been informed by who?
Again, please stick to the items, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was on item number three. I was on item number three.
Correct, and I've been informed that that is not on topic. So, please stick to the agenda items, but you're welcome to move on to general public comment if you'd like.
Speakers, speakers should be aware that Google Translate can pick up what you're saying on the mic.
Okay. I will try again next on Tuesday. Sorry about that. I was not well-prepared.
You have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
For the general public comment, I want to, oh, actually, general public, general public comment is, I want to make sure that our council president recognized that it is very racist that to allow people leaving on the street. I want to make sure this month is February, is a Black History Month, and I want to make sure our council president respects Black History Month, that every single black person in the city of L.A., they should be awarded by one big house by our council member. And then in our Black History Month, we should not allow black people to struggle to make their car payment. Every one of those black people should receive a free Lamborghini Ferrari by our council president. This is our Black History Month. Every single black person should be entitled for their free payment retirement without being, without even employed. So, everybody, black people, should, should be, receive their payment by our council member, Harris Dawson. Black Lives Matter!
I'm glad to know you're an advocate of the Forty Acres and a Mule policy.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Item thirteen.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to provide my testimony. My name is Leila Anderson. I stand before you as a small housing provider and realtor speaking against item thirteen. The blank, this blanket policy, as it currently amends, resembles the initiatives and policies that occurred five years ago with the COVID-19's rent freeze and eviction moratorium policies that have disenfranchised homeowners, landlords of colors. The policy crippled housing providers, homeowners, and real estate investors, causing an unreasonable financial burden, and for many stripped them of their American dream of homeownership and entrepreneurship. With many retired home providers, rental income is their only source of income. Any policy that is approved relating to this matter needs right, I'm sorry, guardrails that provide assistance only for those who show proof of needing this, such as FEMA or unemployment recipient. Additionally, a limit of time needs to be enacted so that we do not experience the years and years of moratorium that was not so long ago. Housing providers are still trying to rebuild from the COVID-19 policies, implementing a moratorium will cripple us even more. I want to uplift the need for housing providers to have for fair rental increase of rents. Utility rates have increased, trash fees are growing, and insurance fees have been drastically increasing due to the recent natural disasters. I urge you, please, do not approve this item thirteen. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item, go ahead.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Augustine Covera. I'm speaking on behalf of Scope, a grassroots organization that has been rooted in South Central and Council District Eight for over thirty years. I urge the council to vote yes without amendments on item thirteen because our communities can't afford more delays or compromises. The recent fires have devastated L.A. Families who were already struggling with unaffordable rent are now at even greater risk of displacement. Thousands have lost their homes, their jobs, and their sense of stability. Without strong eviction protections, landlords will exploit this crisis, raising rents and pushing tenants out of the neighborhoods they have called home for decades. Recovery from this climate disaster will take years, but our response must be immediate. A vote for item thirteen is a vote to keep families housed. It's a vote to prevent rent gouging. It's a vote to protect South L.A. from mass displacement. And the city must stand with its residents, not with the landlords looking to profit from this disaster. I urge you to vote yes on item thirteen without amendments.
General public comment?
Our community is watching, and we need action now. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak to item thirteen and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Danny, and I strongly oppose item thirteen. In the past hours I've spent here listening to both sides debate this issue, and in the stories we'll hear today, I've heard and we will hear emotional and heartfelt, personal stories from both sides. And I truly believe the stories that the tenants on the other side of this issue have shared. That being said, their stories represent issues which the council has already passed laws to address. They are general concerns. These laws just need to be enforced. That being said, I've only heard one side speak to the perspective of long-term policy goals and objectives, the real risk of housing providers leaving this city. If this item passes, City Council will have taken one more step toward making the city unfriendly to business and hostile to housing providers. To pass a blanket moratorium across the entire industry, a bill which means that housing providers are required to work and spend and offer their time and services entirely without payment, again, is a short-term and politically motivated band-aid which would do nothing to help the needs of the vast majority of renters and nothing to make existing laws work. Instead, item thirteen damages the long-term prospects of our city. It's an unfocused weapon intended to punish an entire industry to the existence of its few worst actors. Whatever agendas are in play, I truly believe the most members of the City Council know this. It's easier to pass yet another law to a roomful of cheers than to enforce existing policy. If this item passes with anything but the most focused of protections on those who actually prove to need them, it was never intended to just protect those who are fire-affected. The tragedy is a cover. This item, as it was originally drafted, is lazy and it is political. Item thirteen doesn't help most tenants. It only hurts housing providers. And those two things are not the same.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Hi, I'm speaking to item thirteen and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Christina Boyer. I'm an attorney of public counsel and a member of Keep L.A. Housed. I live in C D five. I implore you to vote yes on item thirteen. It's been over a month since wildfires broke out, and tenants have needed and urgently need these protections. There is no moratorium in this motion. There is no rent freeze, there is no blanket policy. There is an affirmative defense in court if a landlord tries to evict someone who can't pay rent due to losing income from the wildfires. The data doesn't lie. Tenants in L.A. are rent burdened, living paycheck to paycheck, and studies show significant increases in rent prices and displacements after natural disasters. I encourage council to read the recent Economic Roundtable study done for Larso, which shows while tenants are still barely holding on, landlords were more than able to weather the COVID tenant protections. And what's proposed here is much narrower. Both tenants and landlords come to council with stories. Tenants with stories of losing their shelter and landlords with stories of maybe really going to leave the rental market this time because of tenant protections. But the data really only supports what tenants, who make up two-thirds of your constituency, have been advocating for. I don't doubt that there are individual small landlords who are struggling, but I do doubt that tenant protections are antithetical to their wealth building. When tenants thrive, are economically mobile, it's good for everyone. No one wants to see more people homeless. There will not be a perfect policy solution, but we need a solution urgently. People have been evicted, who lost their jobs to the fires because of the delay in passing this protection. I am all for rental assistance, but that will become far too late for many who have lost or will lose their homes without this protection. If you don't pass this narrow, crucial motion today, there will be more tenants falling into homelessness. But hey, at least corporate landlords could get an increase on the return by evicting wildfire victims and bringing in higher-paying tenants. Vote yes on this motion, thank you.
Thank you. Before, the, the more we have to stop for applause, the less speakers we'll be able to take.
Thirteen, against. And please be patient because I'm short of breath today.
Go ahead.
I am a landlord, have been a landlord for thirty-five years. And I think I've been the best landlord anybody can have. We tend to be at the risk of losing affordable units because many people are not paying their rent. The financial strain on housing providers threatens property maintenance, security, and sustainability. What we will have is an economic vacancy. Twenty-five percent of tenants are behind their rents citywide. And what's happening? They want to gouge between the lawyers and the tenants themselves. They want to gouge us. The district attorney has talked about gouging. And one thing is that they want to gouge us for not fifty thousand dollars, but now up to a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I have workers that were displaced because of the fires in the eleventh district.
General public comment?
And you know, they are all working. We need to create jobs. Jobs is what creates progress. And I brought you a happy Valentine's Day for a couple of you in your districts that you need to go clean up because we need to rent those businesses so people can have progress and have jobs to pay their rents. Thank you.
I lost my house in Malibu on January eighth to the fires. I'm also a housing provider in the city of Los Angeles with two fourplexes. This issue affects me personally. If this ordinance passes, countless tenants who were already late on their January rent before the fires will abuse it. Letters from employers will be falsified. Landlords will have no way to verify those letters. Ask any landlord what happens when you call the HR department of a company to verify employment. You're told they can't talk to you without written authorization from the employee, which means that in actuality, there will be no burden of proof on the tenants. You're going to cause more harm than good. This is an anti-housing policy. I hope you understand that. I implore you that if you insist on this ordinance, add into it stiff, financial, and criminal penalties for fraud. Add into it, please, a common sense amendment that says someone who is already delinquent on their January rent before the fires cannot use this.
You've used your one minute on, on item thirteen. I'm going to ask you to move on to the rule twenty-three motion. You can continue during general if you'd like, go ahead.
Okay. Councilman Lee, I appreciate you. About twenty-three, I'm just hearing about this. Please don't do anything to delay cleanup. It reeks, with all due respect, a little bit of NIMBYism when you're saying, "Not in my landfill." We have the EPA, we have the best experts in the country. They're here right now. With the way things are going, I don't know that the EPA and FEMA will be around in a year, but they're here now, on the ground. Let's use them, please, and let them do their work. General public comment, I'll finish. I've suffered an immense loss. Mental, emotional, certainly financial. I am not asking the council to rebuild my home. I am asking them not to deprive me of income at this vital time in my and my family's life. There is no evidence of massive job loss. I can show you evidence of my economic hardship. It's a pile of rubble of PCH. Please do not use my personal tragedy and the personal tragedy of thousands of others to advance a political cause against housing providers. That is shameful. Thank you.
El mes pasado, este, Los Angeles sufrió un devastador incendio forestal que afectó directamente e indirectamente a miles de angelinos.
In the last weeks, we had a devastating tragedy, meaning the fires here in Los Angeles that has affected a lot of angelinos, tenants.
Y empeoraron aún más las crisis de vivienda y de personas sin hogar. Muchos inquilinos perdieron sus hogares mientras otros perdieron sus trabajos.
This adds to the crisis that we already have in the city. Many of tenants lost their jobs, others lost their home.
Y sus fuentes de ingresos de la noche a la mañana los... Y por favor queremos que aprueben la moción 13. Es una emergencia que necesitamos ayuda.
Even though many of the tenants have lost also their income overnight, so I am here to ask you, please, vote yes on item 13.
General public comment?
Ahora comentario público, general. Sí, econó- económicamente todos estamos muy mal. Este, yo ganaba 500 a la semana y ahorita yo no estoy ganando nada. Este, solo tengo otra, otro, este, trabajo y trabajo solo dos días. Y yo necesito pagar mi renta, pagar mis billes y todo, pues no tengo ahorita mucho para pagar.
I have been greatly affected. I used to make $500 a week. Now I only work, I don't have, I have zero income. And I have to pay my rent, I have to pay my bills. So, thank you for listening.
Entonces les pido que por favor nos apoyen y apoyen la moción 13. Gracias.
Please support tenants, please say yes on item 13, motion 13. Thank you.
Do all the housing providers in the room, please stand up. Fred Sutton with the California Apartment Association. The state has committed $2.5 billion in relief. And the LA Times recently asked, donations top $650 million. And the question looms, how to best use it for fire recovery? And I think the answer is clear. This body should be focusing on securing direct rental assistance for those in need and are unable to get unemployment benefits. And if that takes several months, that's a real issue with the city and the government apparatus. These dollars should go to these individuals now. Eviction moratoriums are a blunt instrument that should be used rarely if ever. Yet more and more, the city is shifting greater societal issues onto housing providers. No other industry, not even the city, is asking to provide service for free. The city won't even consider stopping trash franchise hikes or rolling back new fees on housing providers. Yet it now expects them to bear the cost of operating without compensation. Meanwhile, State Farm is requesting an emergency 22% insurance increase. During COVID, there was widespread abuse under self attestation. Many owners did not recoup those losses like they were promised. The consequences remain ongoing litigation against the city, deterred investment, and continued harm to the city's housing stock. Even with the amendments that I was able to glean, this is far too broad, goes on for far too long, and is too open to abuse. Instead of repeating past mistakes, let's focus on those who truly need it and get them direct rental assistance now. Vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Which items would you like to speak on?
First of all, I'd like to say, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, very clear. First of all, my name, first name Doris, AKA, is this mic all right?
The mic is good, sir.
Very good. Mr. Pancake, the housing organizer with the Los Angeles Community Action Network. I'm going to combine public comment and also alluding to item number 13. I'd like to say happy Valentine's Day-
You have one minute for item 13.
-to all of the ladies in the house. Here and now, I promise to love faithfully. That's just a little something right there. All right. First of all, I believe that housing, woo! Housing is a human right. Urging the city council to vote yes on agenda item 13. Let's do the right thing and protect our tenants from evictions. If not, would eventually further our homelessness crisis. I love my city, born and raised here. To the Dumball Hotel, memories on Central Avenue, current price. My uncle had a business right there, 58th Drive and Central. The brotherhood post office, it was a Goodyear Tire Plant. Good to see you, Marcus Dawson, there's. All right, thank you.
I request that city council votes no on item 13 on this proposed blanket eviction moratorium. I am a housing provider and I have owned a triplex for over 15 years in northeast Los Angeles. I am one of the faces who are the mom and pop property owners of this city. I do not have the scale, scope, and number of doors that some of the big corporate housing providers have. I provide housing for the people that you are trying to protect. There is pride of ownership to meet, get to know, and house residents of Los Angeles over the years. I take good care of my property and I take good care of my tenants. It's extremely gratifying to provide a clean, safe roof over the heads of the people who need it most. One of my tenants is a couple who lived in my property for over seven years. We all survived COVID. And during the COVID years, they had a baby. They're good people and the wife works at a local library. Libraries, as we know, are the building block and foundation-
General public comment?
Libraries, as we know, are the building block and foundation of educating the community. Being a librarian is a noble profession. My tenant has, my tenant comes home every day, almost every day for lunch to spend time with her little son. My other tenant is a single nice female who was born and raised in Los Angeles. Her mother lives about five miles away. And my tenant has a sweet little dog named Charlie. And she contributes to the economy of this city. We all share a symbiotic relationship. During the Eden fires of Pasadena, we all watched the property and the heavy windstorms. And we were in touch with each other on a regular basis to provide updates on what was going on and indeed if we needed to evacuate. There are already enough regulations in place to protect tenants against unlawful and unjust eviction. Because every tenant and housing provider situation is different, eviction protection should be addressed on an as-needed and individual basis.
Thank you. Candido Maras, from the slums of Porter Ranch. I started on Van Nuys Boulevard homeless for almost three months. But the good people, the nice Jewish community picked me up and gave me the tools to be able to become a property owner. I got my education on Central Avenue, sir. I had three businesses on Central between Washington and Adams. And the good people of that area took care of, took care of us and nurtured us. So I want to thank them now, all these years later. But as a property owner, my last property I had to get rid of because the people, and this gentleman worked for JPL, but he had four dogs and they destroyed the property over $180,000. I had to sell it. I tried to be a good tenant. But he knew he had me by the cojones because he knew whatever he did, and because he worked for JPL, we were going to have a long lawsuit. Ended up selling that property.
General public comment?
Going on public comment. Right now, I have another piece of property. I'm trying to work with the gentleman, but he's insisting that I give him a long term. I can't give him a long term rental because I don't know what's happening here in this city. I don't know how I'm going to be restricted. I don't know how you folks are going to control my property. You don't have the right to control my property. I am going to be a fair and decent, decent human being and treat my tenants with dignity. I ask you to treat us as dignified people that come to this city, came to the city from wherever we're at. And all we're trying to do is make a good living for ourselves and for our children. And again, from the slums of Porter Ranch, listen, don't go up Reseda Boulevard. It's too dangerous. I don't want to see any of you folks hurt. Thank you.
All right?
Good morning, good afternoon, council members. John Camara from Tarzana, who has had the privilege of jogging and exercising up Porter Ranch for over 35 years now. Now I fear for my life. The speeding cars are in excess of 80 miles per hour. People doing donuts in the middle of the street. People throwing objects out of their cars as I travel up Reseda. Give back Porter Ranch, back to the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Sidney Hopson. I am here to, I'm a professional musician and a cultural policy consultant residing in Council District 4. I'm also a delegate to the LA County Federation of Labor for the American Federation of Musicians, the United States and Canada, Local 47. And I'm speaking in support of item 13 with these appropriate safeguards as we are debating today. LA's musicians are performers, teachers, and global thought leaders. We are a tightly knit community as well. So when the wildfires unfurled, we jumped into action, quickly producing benefit concerts and organizing aid to support our displaced neighbors and calling on employers such as the major film studios not to abandon Angelinos in our dark hour. Many musicians housed friends, colleagues, perfect strangers, and donated their last spare dollar to fellow industry professionals and their GoFundMe campaigns for having lost their homes in histories in the blazes. Many of these actions have now put several at risk of eviction. But included in the devastation of the fires were performance venues, schools, churches, recording studios, rehearsal spaces, personal storage facilities that musicians still rely on for employment. Several hundred concerts, recording sessions, and industry events were canceled due to evacuation orders and toxic air quality, spurring the loss of several thousands of music jobs. From shows at Walt Disney Concert Hall to private house concerts in the Palisades to Sunday services employing instrumentalists and singers, canceled employment drove thousands already struggling to keep pace with LA's high rental prices deeper into financial hardship, and it may take upwards of six months to heal. Moreover, as anti-wot litmus tests are beginning to unfurl throughout our federal policy apparatus, arts agencies, and private foundations are preemptively adopting new guidelines that disqualify grant applications that even include words like diversity or justice. So as rents are rising and employment stagnates, direct funding to artists has become increasingly inaccessible to those whose work challenges far-right aesthetics. So in the wake of these fires, I call on the council again to vote yes on item 13. Thank you.
Colleagues, you know, this was written because this is put in front of us. There is no, nothing set in place. I thought this work would be done in committee to actually define, how are people going to not abuse this like they did the eviction moratorium? Yet something is not in place. On top of that, on top of that, if we say people are affected by fires, what protections do we get? We're trying to help people affected by the fires find housing. What protections do we give those people? If I'm, you know, if I'm a landlord and I'm renting out one of my units, if I find out that they're affected by the fires and that they can use this to not pay me rent next month, what incentive does that give me to open up my ADU? To open up maybe, you know, something, an additional, you know, additional room? If they can just turn around and say, "No, I've been affected, this is not..." Those are the things that worry about me, worry me. The unintended consequences of what we do, you know, really bother me. Look, colleagues, I'll say this again. There are dire unintended consequences with this policy. I know we want to help people. But this is something that will ultimately worsen Los Angeles. Housing cri- this housing crisis, it'll worsen it instead of alleviating it. When we did this the first time, we were not honest with people. Yes, people could be evicted, but the debt that they incurred, it didn't disappear. And in the end, we couldn't do a single thing about it. So we all point to the mass evictions that happened last February. It was because this body was not honest with people that said, "Yes, you can, you don't have to, you don't have to pay rent for one year, two year, however long the eviction moratorium." But we did not tell them that in the end, they would have to pay all that money back or else be evicted. We are the problem. We have a motion in front of us. We had a motion in front of us, 13C, that would have put the burden on us as a city. I am tired of us facing a problem here in the city and then just saying, "Well, we don't want to deal with it, you deal with it." We have, we had a motion, 13C, that was, you know, before we had a chance to sort of look at these, to actually say, "Okay, can we use ULA funds to give direct assistance to people who have been affected by this fire to help them stay housed?" I don't understand how that doesn't pass when it's a simple way. But we'd rather just say, "You know what? That's, that's, that's our money. You, you, you take care of this problem." I, I just, this is, this is, it's been called over and over. You keep, everyone keeps saying, "This is not a moratorium on evictions." This is, though, a moratorium on building more housing here in the city. It's a moratorium on investing in the city, on having the resources to provide the city with the core services that we provide. Counsel, please, I beg you. These things affect our budget, they affect our economy, they affect mom and pop. Everyone here says they want to help. Everyone says they want to help mom and pop landlords. It's simple. We cannot just take bad policy and then just make it less bad. By helping mom and pops, we have to vote against this item. Please, I beg you. Please understand the actions that you are taking today and vote no on item 13.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Park?
You know, colleagues, we have funding available. We have an opportunity to take this burden off of the backs of our housing providers. We've already secured over $10 million in assistance from the state for displaced workers, including housing assistance and temporary job placements. We don't have any data at all in front of us to show, do we actually have a problem? And if so, how widespread is it? What kinds of narrowly tailored interventions could we create that actually addresses this problem? We're nearly halfway into February at this point, and we can't even look at any data to help us inform a policy decision that could have wide-ranging, significant impacts. We actually have about $160 million in ULA revenue that has gone unspent this fiscal year. And if there was ever an emergency that warranted using it under circumstances like this, it's now. But we already took the boat on utilizing that funding and I just, I, I... We continue to put ourselves in this position of having to make policy without good data. And we've all seen repeatedly what the outcomes of that are. Thank you, Councilwoman.
You know, as we continue to have this lively debate, counsel never ceases to amaze me how interesting it is to be here in my short months here. But I think, you know, we can't be lost on that we're talking about real people who are unhoused, who have been affected. And the way that I've been heard, heard it talked about today is as if these people do not exist and they're invisible abusers of the system when they're actually real people in our districts. And here, we're trying to get to a solution. And so, you know, we did, we went through the process. We went through committee, we made a compromise, and we were bringing it to the floor. And let's just be clear here, this is not a blanket moratorium. It is not. It's a misnomer. It's an affirmative defense that once the landlord puts a writ, I mean, look, I'm an eviction defense attorney, we go through the process. You can still fire your eviction proceeding. And then the tenant, it's on them to affirmatively defend. But, you know, as we continue to debate this topic, I think we've put our values out here and we can, I'm asking for us to call the question. Respectfully, thank you.
All right, council member, the council members called the question. There are three people on the queue who have not spoken yet. So they have to be given the opportunity to speak, the city attorney. So actually, if the, so if there's a motion to call the question, it requires a second to that motion. It is not debatable. Because everybody has not had the opportunity to speak twice yet, it requires 10 votes to pass. But as the council president has noted, there are some people who are looking to speak for the first time. So is there a second to the motion, Geraldo, to call the question? Councilmember Rahman? To clarify, so if you have not spoken and you wish to speak, then you should vote no on this motion to call the question. All right, let's open the roll on this, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eight aces, three no.
The call to question has failed.
We've had an opportunity to explore this for weeks now. It's been at council and it's gone through the committee process. Colleagues, you had an opportunity during the committee process to voice your concerns. And after weeks of delays and deliberation, we're still waffling over whether to protect some of our most vulnerable people in our city. We introduced this motion on January 14th with an urgency clause because our city had just gone through one of the worst natural disasters in our history. We saw the writing on the wall. We knew that rent gouging would run rampant. We knew that thousands of people who just lost their jobs and were suddenly wondering how they would be able to pay their rent. We knew that we were facing a second wave to our eviction crises. And since that time, this is, this motion has been cut and amended and whittled down. This is not the same motion y'all had in front of you. It's a completely different motion, but still with protections that are incredibly vital for our city. What we have before us is truly the bare minimum that we can offer people. And this body needs to make a decision. Are we going to delay protecting people impacted by the fires? Are we going to stand up for working class people that have been impacted by the fires? This is about using the power of the government to protect the working people of this city. This is about living up to the responsibility we have all been charged with to care for the most vulnerable among us. I'm asking that you stand with people impacted by the fires in your districts and throughout the city and vote to move this forward. Please, colleagues, take a look at the amendments. The amendments are not calling for a blanket wide eviction moratorium. There's nothing in there about rent increases, nothing. This is just a small Band-Aid to help folks stay in their housing so that more people don't fall into this eviction to homelessness pipeline that then we got to argue how we're going to fund and fix. Thank you, colleagues.
Councilmember Rahman? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. You know, Mr. Hernandez, the idea that some of the very same housing providers aren't part of the working families that we're trying to protect is already a false narrative. Because many of these individuals are the same immigrant families that have built generational wealth that have become the very housing providers that we constantly rely on and that were strung out during COVID before we actually introduced any protections or assistance to help them cover the gaps. Because the reality is, all of these protections are, it's perfect that we're doing it on Valentine's Day because it's a love letter to BlackRock. This is a Valentine's for all of those corporatized housing interests that are ready to gobble up when these people can't pay their mortgages and they go into default. That's who's waiting in the wings to gobble up these properties. And we find ourselves here in this same cycle of providing these protections for individuals. And, you know, Greg just finished going through all of the litany of investments that we are making, not to mention the fact that this council was celebrating instituting the most aggressive tenant protections in the nation. And yet here we are again, expecting the same individuals that have been saddled with the burden of providing the housing absent, because let's be honest, ULA hasn't built a stick of friggin' housing. So if, so how are we continuing to have a conversation around obligating the very same people that we depend on to provide this housing to bear that financial burden over and over and over again? It's like we're not learning this lesson. Well, well, some of us aren't learning the lesson, a lot of us understand it. But it's absolutely foul that we continue to do that and erode the generational wealth that so many families rely on in order to help make it as part of this struggling middle class. And I've seen it happen repeatedly. There is no distinction or differentiation between who you're trying to aid and who is being wounded in these policies. There is no distinction between the ownership of these, when we're instituting these policies. So with that, so, so I look forward to a time when we have a conversation to really, truly delineate that difference so that we can get to the root of it. But the reality is, is that we have instituted a number of protections for these individuals that find themselves vulnerable. Whether it was through myself and Councilmember Padilla standing up our own fire-related financial resources to support these families that have been exposed to job loss or frankly, even just some of the financial losses that they incurred as a result of the power outages that occurred during the mass wildfires and the windstorms. So we do a lot of that support. We do a lot of those things. But to the housing department's own presentation just last year, one of the greatest obstructions to new housing starts, and we already know we are at an all-time low for housing starts, is the lack of ability to know with great certainty what their bottom line is going to be. No one is incentiv- No one is incented to construct new housing in Los Angeles as a result of our continuance to play this game. And it needs to stop. Because the only thing we're continuing to do is exacerbate an already irritated problem, is that we don't have sufficient housing supply. We know that to be the case. But instituting policies like this doesn't aid us in our ability to create a hospitable environment to build more housing in the city. And that is a fact. So colleagues, I'm, I'm, I continue to be disappointed. I, the idea that we could allocate a small portion of the ULA funds to help aid in this conversation to mitigate some of the impact, the fact that that can't even really be fully embraced, to me, again, is another, another twist of the knife for the housing providers, for mom and pop landlords that I know are hamstrung to the, to the lenders that, again, will not give any forgiveness for the fact that they're not collecting rent. They will be the ones who end up having their properties foreclosed on. And I will tell you, having lived and watched from the 2008 recession, what the aftermath was, that's when you saw the greatest spike in the corporatization of our housing stock. And so we stand to see that all over again, unnecessarily, but forced by the policies, the reckless policies like this.
Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. I just want to speak on a, on a, on a couple items. I'll try to be brief, I promise. I, I just want to sort of center the, the issue that we're all trying to address here, or at least some of us are trying to address, is that people who significantly lost income, should they have some sort of protection? That's the issue we're trying to get to. And it, it requires urgency because we do have data about the city of Los Angeles. I know the Housing Department doesn't have it in front of them right now. But I'm very privileged to have a team that has been built out to support tenants. And so we get that list every single week, so thank you for sending it. And those numbers have jumped. And I'm happy to share that data with anyone here at the horse. The Housing Department said we previously had about 1,500 file evictions for failure of payment of rent per month. This week's data is up to 2,400. So it jumped significantly. So the effects are already happening. So if you want to look at the numbers, look at the numbers. We also had testimony from so many of people, working-class people here today that are saying, many of them who are represented by their unions, who said their members are going to them saying that we're falling behind on rent, work, we're already losing work. So we can act, we can look at the numbers, we can look at the testimony. I look also at the constituent calls that I get. It is happening right now. People talking about ULA, I, I don't understand why we keep talking about ULA to find the money. Even if we had the money, our, our department is saying that it's gonna take eight months to get that money out. Am I correct? Six to eight months. Six to eight months. Six to eight months. That, even if we had the money, it's not gonna go, go out fast enough. So what we need to do in this moment is look at what we have in front of us. And I, I think it's a decent compromise. And people might disagree with me, some people in the, in the horse should might disagree with. Because it is, it is focusing on the people who were already living in their apartment when the fires happened. That assuaged many of the concerns that we had from the council member from the 12th district. It caps how much rent debt people can accrue. That's in Amendment 13, 13B, to three months of fair market rent. They have to show proof that they had a loss of income, something that the House Department is going to do. There, we know that there is a verification process, which, which is another part that's important in this. And on top, and by the way, on top of all this, if some of the small landlords here or corporate landlords, where they're listening, you can still go through an eviction process. Nothing stops you from doing that. So if you're really concerned about that, if you're concerned about, you can still go through the process. So I believe that what we have here with the amendments is narrowly tailored to address the issue in a responsible way, which will give us the opportunity to then work on getting the money out. This is, this is not one, one thing that we're doing and that's it. I think the appetite of this council is to do multiple things. But right now, because we know we can't get that money out for six to eight months, we have to do something. The evictions are already happening. I already gave the numbers. So that's what we're really voting on. So I, I don't understand why this is so controversial. Come back and support the ULA, all this energy, come back and support ULA. But I think what we're doing is correct.
Councilmember Blumentfeld. Mister Against the Pillar, you've been worn with the baseball cap.
Okay, I'm, I'm someone who's very torn on this issue. And I'll tell you, you talked about the process. We have a process. We went to committee. I offered an amendment to, the, the original one, I thought, the moratorium or thought was problematic for a lot of reasons. This is much better as a, as a compromise. It's, it's close to what I proposed. In committee, I had all the concerns that had been raised about, about doing this year-long eviction. I didn't think that was fair. I didn't think we could really even legally do that with property rights. But, so I put forward, okay, well, let's, we currently give people a one-month grace period before evictions are allowed. Let's move that to two months. That happened, and I also said we should remove the no-fault evictions piece because frankly, I don't think that's even legal for us to, to be preventing that. We're only talking about, in this case, item two, the no-fault eviction, other than a government issue to vacate, basically means preventing owners from going back into their units. I don't think we, we, we can legally do that, nor should we do that. So I had an issue with that. I had an issue with the extent of it, so I tried to limit it to. And then my colleague said, well, how about if we compromise and move it up to three? And I stretched and said, okay, let's, let's do it at three. But the other piece to that is we, we, we talked about documents. And we were gonna try to come up with a list of documents because I, I am very uncomfortable with the attestation and sort of this generic proof. I think that needs to be much more clearly delineated. So there's a number of things on here that get very close, but I'm just not, I'm not there yet in terms of the way this is all, the way this ultimately comes down. And you mentioned the process. I wanted to work it out in committee and get more information. I was outvoted and it moved forward. So here, you know, I, I recognize that we, we've got a compromise that is not that far off from what I put forward in committee. But I'm not ready to go with it today, so I'm, I'm a no on this.
The final vote would be yes, six, no, five.
Got it. This motion fails. All right, what's next? Let's open the roll on receive and file. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Five eyes.
The motion to receive and file has failed.
All right, what's next?
Right, so, yes, so I, I don't believe that we can reconsider this item today, so it's going to remain on the desk and will appear on the next council agenda.
That's correct.